Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special city council meeting for Monday, May 11th. Tonight, we are going to reconvene the public hearing. Before we do, I'd like to ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Farini.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Blaylock.
Here.
Councilor Noveline Clayberg. Councilor Dwyer.
Councilor Smith.
Here.
Councilor Kennedy.
Here.
Councilor Spear.
Here.
Councilor Hetmanic.
Here.
Councilor Panalakis.
Also at this time, I would like to ask if everyone would please join us in a moment of silence in honor of Mayor Evelyn Sorel. Thank you very much, and I should add at this time that there is going to be a service of remembrance for Mayor Sorel on Friday, this Friday, at 4:00 in the City Hall chambers. It will be televised so that you can watch on TV if you are unable to attend or are not going to be able to make it down to City Hall. City Hall will be closed at 3:45, so for those of you who wish to attend, we certainly will welcome you at that time. In addition, I would like to now move on with the recessed public hearing, but first we'll turn it over to the city manager, who has some brief comments, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, the city council reconvenes the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 10 budget. Since the public hearing on April 15th, the city councils met in work session with various departments from the municipal, police, fire, and schools. You all have probably, if you haven't picked up a copy of a handout that we have for updating on the budget, there is some out front, and if you don't have one, just raise your hand. I think we can get you one, so you don't have to walk out front to get it, but those are there. The handout primarily talks about the reductions that the city council has made in the budget, primarily. There was a reduction that was made in the police department budget in the amount of This is a result of the Public Works Department reducing their proposed FY 10 expenditures. This reduces the tax rate by an additional 0.03 cents from the original proposed rate of 0.30, so now the tax rate is being proposed at 0.27 cents. All departments, with the exception of the school department, now have their operating budgets at or below last year's level. They're at or below fiscal '09. The fiscal '10 budgets are basically a zero operating budget increase. What I have provided is this two-page summary. If you look at what is labeled as Page 1, you can see that the operating budgets for municipal have slightly decreased. Police, from when we originally talked about the budget when it was submitted to myself, has been decreased by $124,601 to last year's level. Fire is at 600, excuse me, stays at zero, and the school department has an increase. And the footnote that you have there, the school department's budget reflects the cost of living increase in the teachers' contract, which was approved by the city council. This represents 1.6% of the budget's 2.2% increase over fiscal 2009 budget. The remaining increase of $228,000 is requested by the school board. And when I've met with department heads back in January, one of the things I asked them to do was to stay to zero. In the case of the school department, when I talked to the superintendent of schools, I asked him to stay within the cost of living increase for the teachers. So essentially, if you were basically trying to compare apples to apples with the municipal police and fire, in order to achieve the same type of result, there would have to be a reduction of $228,000 in the school board budget, not the $785,000 that is listed there, because there are funds set aside in other parts of the budget in the event the city council goes forward with approval of collective borrowing agreements. There are 14 collective borrowing agreements still in negotiations at this time. Then going down to the next chart, the proposed tax rate, you can see that the proposed tax increase is at 0.27. The 0.3 reduction from the original 0.30 that was proposed is with the reduction in the police department budget. You can see that 0.21 of the tax increase is loss of state revenue, and 0.6 deals with the school department for a total tax increase of 0.27 cents. And for every 0.1 reduction in the tax rate, it's equal to approximately $37,900 in the reduction expenditures, an increase in revenues, or a combination of both. So if the average, if the 0.27 increase would be an additional $27 on somebody's tax bill for every $100,000 of property valuation. Then we have the fiscal '10 external factors. I discussed those earlier with you at the April 15th public hearing. We lost, or we are in the process, the budget process is going on at the state legislature as we speak, and we anticipate a loss of revenue sharing in the amount of $657,000, which we factored into this year's budget. Reduction of motor vehicle registrations in the amount of $250,000. Reduction in investment income of $250,000. An increase in county tax of $197,000. So those external factors that have affected the tax rate total about $1.3 million. External factors which may affect the tax rate, we're still waiting to hear for the final budget from the legislature. The meals and rooms tax was reinstated, and we did put that in our revenue side budget. That's $921,000. And school building aid for the high school, we hope that that will be reinstated, and that's about $1 million. So total external factors that we have been dealing with with this budget this year amount to about $3.3 million. Once this public hearing is completed, the city council will continue its deliberations on Wednesday night to try to finalize their budget, and hopefully, we will be able to have a vote from the city council on the proposed fiscal '10 budget at the June 22nd meeting. It was scheduled originally for June 8th, but because of the issue with the state budget, it was felt by the city council that they should hold off until June 22nd to get a better handle on what's happening with the budget. Hopefully, everything that I've listed here will happen the way we expect, but we never know any unanticipated issues that might come up. So the council has to, by charter, finish their budget deliberations and approve the budget by June 30th, or the budget that I presented to the city council becomes law. This time, Your Honor, I'd like to turn it back to you to reconvene the public hearing.
We'll reconvene the public hearing. I just have one additional announcement to make, and then we'll get into the public hearing itself. On Monday, May 18th, we have a regular meeting of the city council, and it is expected that we will present for a vote to the city council a union contract from the Professional Management Association, and that agreement would include a wage freeze for fiscal year 10. I'm very pleased and proud to report that they are making that offering, so that you have a sense of what that might mean financially, is that would be an impact of $136,379 in total, with $107,658 coming to the general fund, and then an additional amount, the difference between $136,000 and $107,000, would affect, for example, water and sewer funds, U-DAG, et cetera. So that's a wonderful, a wonderful contract to be bringing forward to the city council. We also have, as you recall, the city manager having indicated he would forego his raise for 2010, and it's that sort of, you know, far-thinking community spirit that assists us in doing a budget in difficult times, so.
Your Honor, I also like to add that I'd like to thank the management staff for coming forward and offering that wage freeze for fiscal year 10. I think it shows a lot of leadership on their part.
It absolutely does, and we cannot thank you enough. I also will take this opportunity to welcome concerned citizens, department heads, staff of all of the city departments, school, fire, police, municipal services. We have a lot of people here to speak this evening, I presume, and I need to give you the rules one more time as to what a public hearing is and how we do it. You have an unlimited time in which to speak, and that said, I would ask that you take into consideration that your neighbor will also have that same right, and so focused remarks are certainly appreciated. There are three rounds to the public hearing, so if you've spoken in the first round and you do not wish to speak again, you can wait until the second round, and if a light dawns upon you and you wish to give us a further offering, we're more than happy to receive it in the second round and then accordingly in the third. So that is the way we engage in those public hearings. We will not be engaging in a question and answer, but we will keep note of those questions or issues that are raised as we continue our budget deliberations. So with that, I will open the public hearing. I would just ask, if you could queue up a little bit so that we can move it along, state your name and address for the record for the city clerk, and if you have a submittal, we'll certainly accept those as well. So anyone who wishes to speak, you're most welcome. Please come forward. I'll open the first round.
Good evening, Mayor, city councilors. Bill St. Laurent, 253 Colonial Drive, president of the Association of Portsmouth Taxpayers. This evening, the Association of Portsmouth Taxpayers extends its praise and appreciation to this council, fire commission, police commission, and municipal departments for their concern toward the economic plight of the taxpayers of Portsmouth in drafting the fiscal year 210 budget. We know the tireless effort and challenges it took to arrive at a zero budget, but it was a necessary effort to meet these tough economic times. We recommend, I'm sorry, we commend the mayor for his initial request of a zero budget, and he's sticking to it. To our city manager for his request to increase his contribution to his medical insurance and not taking his wage increase for 2010. Councilors Panalakis and Clayberg in taking a stand to vote against certain requested increases, which will and have altered this budget. Now this budget before you, and we recommend passage only if all departments can arrive at a zero budget. It is only fair that if 99% of the city departments struggle to hold the line, that all departments should do the same. The budget before you also contains increases in the county budget, which should also be brought in line, so there will be no tax increase for this fiscal year. The effort made by the different city departments to work for a zero budget will be negated if there is an increase over the last year's fiscal year budget. We at the Taxpayers Association would like to address a few recommendations regarding the fiscal year 2000 budget, and hope that this council uses caution to possible situations which would negate and undo all the hard work accomplished to get to a zero budget. In the CIP, there are monies set aside for the hiring of consultants to do studies for future projects. We understand that some of these studies are not within the purview of our city employees and need consultants with the expertise in the field required, in the field required, but most of these studies could and should be done by our gifted employees, such as our directors in planning, traffic, recreation, education, et cetera. We hire and promote these people for their expertise, so let's use them instead of paying out these exorbitant fees for consultants, which, by the way, basically get paid to borrow your watch to tell you the time. We should let our own people make extra money and use expertise to help the city, to help better the city, and we will be saving money from the large payouts to hire these consultants. Two examples of studies which we feel could have been handled in-house are the $30,000 to look into building a parking lot with an upper level next to the fire station for the middle school area, and a study for more recreational areas and an initial cost of originally $25,000, and increased to $38,000 for a total of $63,000 because a consultant could not do it for the mere $25,000. Here are just two projects with a total of $93,000 that could have been eliminated, maybe hiring teachers. That could and should have been done in-house. We understand that the city in this budget has set aside monies to account for contractual increases that may occur during contract negotiations. Of these monies set aside, we believe almost half has been negotiated into the teachers' contracts, which leaves approximately another $500,000 for 14 contracts yet to be negotiated. This amount must be considered when negotiating these contracts to keep the budget within tow. Next, you must be cautious of the supplemental requests which may occur because of the low budget increase or the zero budget increase. These two items could alter the low budget increase and negate the efforts made to help the taxpayer. Another item we would like to address that could alter this budget is the retroactive costs that will occur in contract negotiations, especially the COLA and wage increase differences from last year. And lastly, we would ask that you negotiate a five-for-five-year contracts and a 10-year rolling CIP. A lot of people see me up here, think that I'm just out to, the Taxpayers Association is just here for the benefit or to help the fixed-income people in the city. However, you know, I talk to many people, and I don't know if anybody has sent a child to college lately, but a lot of people are trying to send their kids to college, and it's very, very expensive. So anything that can help them to decrease their taxes or keep their taxes down, them and a lot of other young couples that need help, it would be helped. Please keep this budget zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker in the first round? Does anyone care to rise? Seeing no one rise in the first round, we see someone rising. Almost called the second round on you. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Eric Anderson, 38, Georgia's Terrace in Portsmouth. Again, I probably might reiterate some of the points that the previous speaker made, but hopefully, it's just to reinforce them. I think without a doubt, the financial landscape has changed considerably since last year, and when we got up and spoke, again, with our concerns, and as, you know, as we know, you know, states and thousands of cities across, cities and municipalities and towns across the nation are considering the same type of debate of how to cut costs. And we appreciate the fact, or I appreciate the fact, that this city has taken a very diligent effort in bringing together a zero budget increase. Again, I want to thank the council for their goal and their target. I want to thank the city manager, his staff, and all related departments for, at this time, bringing together what, you know, their best efforts for that zero budget goal. But there is some concerns. One of the things that I think is highlighted or is a noteworthy issue, it's not pretty, it's not relatively contingent on this year's budget, but it's our bonding debt. In reviewing the budget in the out years, any issue, especially this year, that you're going to go into a bonding service for or look for bonding issues, it's going to be a debt that's going to have to be repaid by the city. And it's just been an observation in reviewing, you know, components of the budget that, as much as the goals are set, there's been a high mark set for this year, there's concern for some of the out years in 2000, I think, '11, '12, and '13, where the city approaches its legal debt limit of what it is, I think the city charter calls that it cannot exceed 10% of its, of the city's valuation. And we are going to approach that very, very closely through the course of those years in the higher 9%. So any bonding issue, so the relative, you know, the relativity to this discussion, is any bonding issue that is incorporated in this budget might have to be looked at again or at least scrutinized again to make sure that that debt service is minimized, not particularly for this year, but for the out years that has been presented in the budget. As the previous speaker said, it's relatively unclear right now what the remaining 14 contracts are going to, how they're going to affect this year's budget. As he said, there was, I think there was a million dollars set aside last year in contingency funds, and $500,000 of that has been used on one particular contract. You still have, you know, you still have a portion of that, you got 50% of that contingency fund left for 14 more contracts, and it's just unclear how those, if those contracts are negotiated within a particular time, how they will affect this budget in the fact that they're, you know, whatever's negotiated might be caused to, you know, revisit this, you know, this particular budget to meet the demands of what those negotiations produce. I know it's a well-guarded process, and, you know, there has been some exposure to it a little bit, but still a lot more contracts to negotiate, and they comprise the major portion of this budget, probably 80, more than 85% of the budget. So it's a very contentious issue, or it's an issue to watch very closely. We do understand that it's been approximately, I think I've understood that there's approximately $1.5 million that's going to be used from the funded balance account to help meet the goals of the zero budget for this particular year, and I think that's commendable. I know our city manager has guarded that fund very cautiously in past years because it is very important to what the bond rating of the city is, and so that the city has a good bond rating. And just reviewing it, and I don't know, I just don't have the knowledge that where that one, where all the other departments are coming in at a zero budget increase, where that $1.5 million from the funded balance is going. It must be, I know it's been, you know, frugally distributed throughout the budget to keep that at zero, but it's just a question that I don't, I don't understand, and maybe there could be a response. As was said, I mean, you know, and observed through the literature here, and the only department right now that hasn't attained a zero increase is the school department. With respect to the needs and the costs of what's required to maintain and fund the schools, it's the largest portion of the budget. And with, with respect to the fact that they returned approximately $380,000 from last year, that's good, but in the same respect, they probably overestimated their requests, and so there should be some scrutiny to look through that budget. And I know that the council has set scenarios for them to try and achieve additional reductions, and hopefully, they can accomplish that and join the rest of the team of departments that has produced a zero increase. I would have to agree with the previous speaker with regards to studies, we have, and the costs that's associated with them. We have a great amount of talent in this city, a lot of in-house talent, and, you know, where and if that might be used to defray some of those costs, hopefully, it might be looked at again. They're important studies. I know it's recreational and parking, they're two important issues, but if 1% of the budget represents about $37,000, the costs of these two projects, I guess mathematically, would be somewhere around 2.5%, if I'm right, and just a quick, you know, back-of-the-envelope Finally, I just want to commend everybody again. This isn't something I'd normally do during this process, and it's not that everybody works very hard at it, but I just hope that with, you know, the amount of work that's gone in and the public enthusiasm that's being represented with regards to a zero budget, that you're very diligent to attain that goal through the course of the fiscal year, and that we're not being set up or there's not, that there's, you know, complete truth in this budget so that, you know, you're not put in a position later on in the year where you have to revisit issues for supplemental appropriations because of some shortfall that was not projected correctly. I think that would be very discouraging. It would kind of erode your achievement, and I think probably not, I think diminish public trust with the fact that you've worked hard, but you didn't, but issues got in a way that you had to revisit this budget and make additional appropriations for it. So I, again, I really appreciate your efforts, and I hope that you can meet your goal through all departments and that you can meet the goal through the course of the fiscal year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your Honor, what I'd like to do is just clarify a couple of things that Mr. Anderson said, just so that there's no confusion. On the fund balance, there is a proposed use of $1,530,000, and that's reserved for collective bargaining. There are 14 agreements out that are being negotiated. As the mayor said, one collective borrowing agreement, the Professional Management Association has entered into an agreement, tentative agreement, which will be acted on by the city council, which calls for no salary increase for fiscal year 10. The other thing I want to just talk about is the bond limitation. I think it's important to make a distinction that the bond limitation that Mr. Anderson has talked about is a self-imposed guideline that we have. Under the law, we have substantially more bonding capacity. Obviously, we don't want to always go up to the top of that capacity, but the 10% rule is really our own self-imposed rule. For example, with the general government side of the budget, we're only at 33% of our capacity for bonding, legal limit. I'm talking about the state statute. With regards to the schools, we're only at 9% of our legal limit, and with regards to our water and sewer, we're only at about 10% of our legal limit. Now, those legal limits are really high, so we'll never get to those. The item that Mr. Anderson talked about was a self-imposed guideline that we watch to make sure that we don't go beyond what we feel as a city is acceptable. So that's just a clarification. He got the policies right, but there were just a couple of number issues that I just wanted to clear up.
Thanks for the point of order. Continue with the public hearing. If anyone cares to speak, you are most welcome. Please come forward and give your name and address.
I'd also ask that you try to get close to the speaker as more people speak so that we can move the hearing along.
Hi, Emmy Adams, 6 Nixon Park. I wasn't going to speak tonight, and I did not come with anything prepared like I usually do, but I have this feeling of doom that is falling over me, and the school board, I don't feel is asking for that much. They're asking for a small increase that is keeping the status quo, and the last time that I've spoken at these hearings, I've talked about the increase, as have everybody else, the increase in volunteering and the increase in donations that the parents make to the schools on any given year. We've also talked about the consistent and continual decrease of paraprofessionals, office staff, and teachers over the past couple of years. I've been involved with the Don Darrow School District for, this is my fifth year, and every year, I've lost either a teaching position or a paraprofessional. And it's very obvious what that's done for the education of my two daughters. One is in fourth grade, one is in second grade. On Monday, on our return from vacation, both girls got new students added to their classrooms. My second grader has 20 kids in her class, and my fourth grader has 25 kids in her classroom. in her class, nineteen of which are boys. And I don't know about any of you, but I max out at eight girls at my house for a birthday party, so having nineteen boys in a classroom is a big concern for me. The paper, or different citizens have been speaking about the potential of you denying their request because either the school board in the past has given money back to you because they haven't spent it, or that there are no set standards for perhaps teacher ratio, or how they're going to spend their money, how they're going to turn over their technology, their computers, or how they're going to replace their textbooks. Maybe those standards haven't been set, but I'm asking you not to punish the children or the teacher for those lack of standards, but instead, request from the leadership of either the school board or yourself to force those standards to be set and met and approved. This has been a really enlightening experience for everybody, and I think many holes have come out. I think a lot of parents have become much more aware of what has not been done in the schools lately, and I think that has trickled down from the top down. And I'm just asking that you do support the school budget, and that you don't cut anything more than you have to. And the final note, the twenty-seven dollars for a hundred thousand, like I said last time, I'm going to say it again, that's a dinner for four, twice a year, sacrifices of family, or a fixed income couple, you don't go out to dinner twice, and for a couple of two, and that's not a lot to ask for our children. Thanks.
Thank you. Please step up. Once again, I'll ask that people come, you can come and sit in the seats closer to if you're going to speak so that we can move the hearing along. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening to all of you, and thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jennifer Godro, and I live on Five Marjory Street. My son is in first grade at Don Darrow, and my daughter will start kindergarten in 2010. I'm going to be really brief tonight. I just want to support and thank Emmy for what she said, and I'm here to support the schools. My husband and I, and our extended family members, friends, neighbors, all support no further education program cuts, and would like to see elementary class sizes aimed at a ratio fifteen to one. I'm concerned about the class sizes at Don Darrow since we lost two teaching positions last year, and I don't believe there's a plan in place to replace these lost positions. Also, my son's first grade class is in a bubble. There are, I think, sixty-seven first graders. It's one of the biggest groups at the school. Last year, and I'm fully in support of full-day kindergarten, it was wonderful for the students, but they had to squeeze them into three. It was twenty, forty, sixty, I believe, last year. First grade, I think the numbers have gone up to sixty-seven, and luckily there were four first grade classes. But basically, my son had twenty in kindergarten and nineteen in first grade. The ratios used to be, you know, I remember, you know, a few years ago thinking, I can't wait till he starts, and here it's ten, here it's fifteen. You know, starting at twenty was a challenge, and first grade to nineteen is a challenge. I'm hoping that there'll be four second grades at Don Darrow next year. There are only three this year, and I'm also concerned that the large second and fourth grade classes you've heard about not have to struggle with the large third and fifth grade classes next year. This isn't just Don Darrow, this is New Franklin and Little Harbor, I'm just speaking as a Don Darrow parent. I understand that the school board may be looking at changing, there was something in the paper, the association of Portsmouth teachers cap of twenty-four elementary students per class. I just heard Emmy Adams speak about a class having twenty-six, so we're already over that. And twenty-seven in middle and high school, there was something in the paper about this a couple of days ago. I'm in agreement that a public dialogue should take place about what is reasonable. Lots of research has been done. A lot of common sense and experience show us that we should aim for fifteen. There's been, I think it's a student achievement ratio study, there's, it was called SAGE, and then there's a STAR study, student-teacher achievement ratio. One's in Tennessee, and one was in Wisconsin in the late, I think it was nineteen nineties, showed the ratio fifteen to one is extremely important in the early elementary years, and it's extremely important for at least two years in a row. So my son hasn't had that yet. He's had twenty in kindergarten, he's had nineteen in first grade, and I'm concerned that next year, he's going to have twenty-two, twenty-three. And I'm concerned about, as I said, the other grades that are struggling. We've lost the two positions, once you lose them, you don't get them back. My child isn't going to get back his kindergarten, first, second grade experience, you know, it's not like we can go back and say, oh, let's do it again, you know, that's it, this is the only chance he gets. So not only do I support the six-point-six, the increase, forget the exact number, but I'm hoping for a return of at least one position that's been lost, and to reduce class sizes and look at, you know, what our children deserve, and look at sort of, you know, a global view of the Portsmouth City Schools. There was a wonderful program highlighted in the paper also this weekend, a math program for advanced students. There's just, the teachers are incredible. I just want to give them the support they deserve, our students the support they deserve, and, you know, like I said, we don't get to do this again. Please consider that as you look at the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak in the first round? If you do, please come onto the microphone. Seeing no one rise, I'm going to close the first round and go to the second round, and I would certainly ask that people come forward and speak if they so desire. Does anyone else care to speak in the second round? Close the second round and call the third and final time. So if someone wants to speak, speak now or forever hold your peace, or at least until the next public comment session at a city council meeting. Does anyone care to rise?
Mayor and City Council, Bill St. Lawrence, 253 Colonial Drive. I don't mean to dispute anything that I hear, but I've been hearing a lot of items about the teacher ratio with the students. I've talked to, and have many teacher friends that are either retired or are not teaching now, and they're coming to me and they're saying, I had thirty, thirty-five students in my classroom, and I never had a problem. These people are still alive. I mean, it isn't back in the thirties or twenties. So I'm not sure I understand the whole teacher ratio problem, but when I'm hearing, and I'm talking about a lot of teachers that I went to school with and I had as teachers, talking about this ratio, they just don't understand where it's coming from, because they didn't have problems teaching twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five students per class. So I just had to speak on this because I have heard a lot on this. So that's one particular issue that I thought I would bring up. Thank you.
Thank you. More speakers. Welcome.
Hi, Kirsten Barton, 300 Court Street, Portsmouth. I want to thank you guys for how you run the city. I think it's amazing, and I think just getting involved in what's happening in education has been a big deal for me. I mean, I can hardly understand all the ins and outs of it, so how you guys run a city, I have no idea. But I think part of what I've learned as well as looking into all of this is that we should be really lucky. We have had no large layoffs throughout the city. I think that's a real big credit to how you run the city. And we can say that for the schools as well. I mean, I want to thank Dr. Lister and everybody that works at the schools, because there's school systems that are laying off, you know, over ten teachers, and that's quite a bit. When I hear people talk about class sizes and that they don't matter, I think that's unfair. It's an uneducated statement, and it makes me think that we shouldn't be micromanaging these budgets. I mean, the people that are running the schools, they understand what they're doing. I think they're doing a great job, I think they're trying their best, and I think they're making it work. I think they could do a lot more with more money, obviously, but there may be other ways to support the schools besides just giving them money, especially since we have the economic crisis that we're facing right now, and everyone's trying to contract and protect. I think that's great. Some of the things when I was thinking of how we can support the schools without actually doing the money thing is the policies, putting plans in place of how we can increase better programs in our schools, and actually supporting our schools with an attitude, putting them in the master plan, saying that education is important, holding up our schools that we're proud of them, that we want people to come to them like we have government officials come and take tours of our library. They should come and take tours of our schools and be proud of the facilities that our kids are going to as well. And then the other thing is maybe, listening to your work sessions, I think that you guys have a lot of great ideas, and sharing them with the schools, doing some more coordinated planning, I know that may not always work, but it's nice to hear the dialogue and some ideas from outside. So I want to thank you for the work session on Wednesday, and I'm looking forward to the next one on Wednesday, and hopefully some good things can come out of that as well. But just, thanks, thanks very much for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker.
Mayor, City Council, can you hear me? Again, thank you for having this open session and allowing us to speak what we think is important. I do think these work sessions are incredibly important, but I did want to make a plea for the money thing.
I'm sorry, could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Ethel Sarah Wolper. I live on Middle Road in Portsmouth, and I have a daughter in Don Darrow. I did want to make a plea that we still do need the money thing, and I wanted to start out by saying I do support the increase in the budget. I'm a college professor, and I see the difference when I teach smaller classes versus larger classes, and much more importantly, I see students who have been coming in who know how to write and have certain skills. Those students are the ones that do well at college, those that don't have those skills never really catch up, and it's made me very proud in the past to have a number of those students. When I say, you seem to know how to write, where did you go to school? When they say Portsmouth, it's made me very happy. And consistently, we're looking at a group of students that I'm teaching that have benefited from those years when classroom sizes were smaller, and there was more of a teacher-student ratio, I mean, with less of a teacher-student ratio, and they benefited from more attention. And I think these ratios are very important. I think they're particularly important in the early years when people are learning their first skills, and I just wanted to pledge my support. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Valerie Fagan. I live at seventy-five Gate Street, and I'm here tonight to represent high school parents. And just to keep it simple, please support the school budget. An important, you know, message is, a strong school system really supports the community and always makes it stronger. So thank you for your support. Good night.
Thank you. Make sure that I pause sufficiently to allow anyone else who's working up the gumption to come forward if they wish. Does anyone else, we're in the third round, so, you know, again, I'm calling the final round, so if anyone wants to speak, I want to make sure that I chat on just a little bit to give them that opportunity. Does anyone else care to speak on the public hearing? Going once, going twice, I'll close the public hearing. And I want to say, we're going to have a motion to adjourn, but I want to say to citizens, department heads, everybody who's worked on these budgets, we continue to appreciate the hard work, we don't take it for granted, it's not easy for anybody, and I appreciate the sensitivity that people have used on all sides, so. This time we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.